We'll move on to item six, public hearing.
Public hearing, hold a public hearing to receive the 2019 Housing Element Annual Progress Report and authorize transmittal to the California Department of Housing and Community Development and Governor's Office of Planning and Research.
Pamela Wu: Please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Pamela Wu and I'm the city's planning and housing manager. I have the pleasure to provide you with the report for the 2019 Housing Element Annual Progress Report. The objective for tonight is to hold a public hearing to receive the 2019 Housing Element Annual Progress Report and authorize the transmittal to the California Department of Housing and Community Development and Governor's Office of Planning and Research. The agenda for tonight, I will first start with the objective for tonight's action, then I'll present the annual housing progress report and follow with an update on various housing program. And finally, I'll conclude with staff's recommendation for tonight's action. To provide you with a little bit of background, each local jurisdiction in the state of California, including San Bruno, is required by state law to prepare an annual progress report on the status and progress of implementing the housing element of the general plan. The report is due annually by April 1st for the calendar year immediately preceding the reporting deadline, and the city is required to hold a public hearing before the city council and accept public comments. The April 1st due day is in a statute and remains effective at this time even with the COVID-19 emergency. Since 2018, the report forms has been updated to incorporate new reporting requirements based on new state laws. These new reporting requirements include more detailed data about housing development application in the city and are presented in attachment one to your staff report. The report also focuses on the city's progress towards implementing its housing element programs and meets its share of the regional housing needs allocation, AKA the RINA number and other housing goals. The annual progress report is comprised of multiple tables. Table A and A2 provide information on new residential development in various stages of the development process and affordability level during 2019. Table B provides information about the permitted housing units by affordability levels to document the city's progress in meeting the RINA allocation. While San Bruno has no data to report for tables C, E, F, and G, Table D provides a detailed narrative status and progress of the housing element program and policy implementations. Table G is a newly added requirement pursuant to the 2019 state housing law update. This table shows the city's progress in issuing building permits for new housing construction to meet with the city's share of the RINA allocation needs by income category. The current housing element period covers eight years from 2015 through 2023. In 2019, the city of San Bruno issued building permits for a total of 49 new residential units. These consisted of 17 accessory dwelling units, the ADUs, two single-family residential dwelling units, and 30 multifamily residential dwelling units, and they're both part of the Skyline College project. In 2019, the city only received a total of 12 new units for a housing development application, and they were all for ADUs. After the first five years of the eight-year planning cycle, the city has issued permits for a total of 168 new housing units. This leaves a remaining need for 987 housing units to be permitted over the next four years. While the previous table shows units for which a building permit for construction has been issued, however, the city has the opportunity this year to make significant progress towards meeting the city's housing needs allocation by the end of the housing element cycle. Based on development application, the city has approved that it's currently processing and the untapped development capacity in the transit corridor plan area. This slide shows a total of six development projects that are still in various stages of review, which include a total of 587 units. The annual progress report provides a list of housing element goals and programs as progress was achieved on the program in 2019. This slide highlights some of the most important achievements in 2019 towards implementation. This includes the adoption of city's development impact fee, parking requirement amendment as part of zoning code update. This also includes ongoing implementation of the transit corridor plan that included city council's approval for the 500-silvian residential project and the adoption for the downtown parking management plan and the Sematell Avenue streetscape plan. There are other additional key achievements in 2019 toward implementation of the housing element goals and policies that include continuing coordination with the local school district on formal school site reuses. This includes the processing entitlement application to allow Straffer School to utilize the El Cristo school site and also to partner up with the Parks School District to prepare a land use information for the Enval School RFP. As previously mentioned, council adopted a parking requirement amendment to allow various parking strategies and an updated parking requirement for multifamily residential uses in regard to the city's Affordable Housing Impact Fee Fund and new strategies to implement the program. The city council also adjusted the impact fee in November 2019 and also authorized funding to retain a professional consultant to develop an affordable housing fund implementation plan, which include policy options and funding opportunities for the programming of the current $3.8 million in housing impact fee. In the future, the city is anticipated to receive additional funds. As well, in November 2019, the city council considered enacting the urgency ordinance to provide interim rent stabilization and just cost eviction protection to tenants in advance to AB 1482. Lastly, the city continues to support Life Moves and participates in county-wide quarterly homelessness advisory committee meetings. Life Moves supports the city in working closely with homeless individuals and their families, such as providing services for those who are on the street or in a vehicle. Life Moves' ultimate goal is to establish stable housing and long-term self-sufficiencies for the homeless population. The staff report also includes a brief summary of local efforts to remove governmental constraints to the maintenance, improvement, and development of housing. However, in 2019, there has not been significant accomplishment in this area. The city continues to examine various funding sources for affordable housing and examine internal and external policy constraints. In terms of state housing law update, on October 9, 2019, Governor Gavin Newsom signed into law a housing package that included approximately 20 new housing laws. An overview of these housing laws is organized in attachment two of your staff report. In conclusion, staff recommends city council to receive the Housing Element Annual Progress Report for 2019 and also authorize the transmittal to the California Department of Housing and Community Development and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. This action will ensure the report is transmitted before the deadline of April 1st. Thank you. I'll be more happy to answer any questions.
Pamela Wu: Thank you, Pamela, for your report. So first, keep in mind this is a public hearing, and obviously, we don't have members of the public here honoring the stay in place and at home. I have checked with Joanne. There have been no emails thus far communicated. So are there questions or comments from our council?
Linda: Right, a question. So there was mention of the 2019 state housing law update. Have our zoning codes and all of our rules, have they been reconciled with each other and all the new laws to ensure that they're consistent?
We're in the progress of doing that.
And what is the timeframe for that?
There are multiple steps and also involvement. We're hoping and looking at city attorney and city manager possibly towards the end of this year.
Oh, great. Thank you. And then my other question is regarding the 1,155 unit requirement. We have 987 apparently remaining. So can you just talk a little bit about, or maybe this is a city manager question, I'm not sure, but what has happened to other cities who have not met their RINA requirements?
So up until now, the RINA requirements have been a requirement that the city zoned for enough housing. There has not been a requirement that the cities produce the housing because we don't produce housing, right? The private sector does. Increasingly, I think what you see with State Senator Scott Weiner, the governor, and other legislators, due to the extreme housing crisis that we're in, there are more and more draft pieces of legislation. Certainly, over the last few years, SB 50 is a prime example, but there are sister bills and a number of things that didn't pass, but there are the continual potential legislative actions that will penalize cities if you do not approve housing projects when they come to you. And so we know that our RINA numbers will increase. I would say this globally, though, we know that we are in an extremely tough housing market, and we are in a housing crisis at all levels of affordability. And so the spirit of RINA is that we actually allow housing to be built, and I think that's something that I know we're all working towards. And the other piece is we know that COVID-19 and the downturn in the economy and the potential recession may impact that, and so we need to continue to work towards that and work toward making housing happen where we can.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Marty. So I just want to thank you for the report and also just add a couple of questions. Understandably, there's been a lot of talk and legal legislation for housing. This, there's a five years, I'm sorry, eight years, 2015 to 2023?
That is correct.
So we have three more years to make these numbers.
That's 20, 21, 22, 23. You have, we have four years, including this year.
Including this year, right. So we have four more years to reach these numbers. I feel fairly confident that we're going to be able to meet the above moderate, moderate numbers, even the low ones, because we only need 27 more units there. My concern is the very low, where we have to make up 358 units?
That's correct.
That's a lot bigger than mine. All right. What should the council be doing for that? Being that it takes a couple of years generally to get a big project through, and to get 358 units of the very low seems like a big challenge, and I'm just curious to see what staff has in plan to address that.
Sure. Marty, I think the first thing I want to say is the numbers that you reported, we should look at the very last column. And so the ground we would need to make up over the next four years is 967 units. And so it's not 27 low, it's 94 low units that are remaining, 168 moderate, and 377 above moderate.
I stand corrected. You're absolutely right.
And then the very low is really close to the amount of the moderate units that we need to make up, and that's 358. I would say, to address your question, the best thing that we can do is to incentivize economic development, and when projects come before us, figure out a way to partner with the private community, be they residential projects or commercial. For residential projects, we know that the city of San Bruno has a 15% affordability requirement. And so if someone is proposing to build 100 units, they have to provide 15% of those affordable units. And so that's 15 units, and they can be at various levels of affordability. They could also pay in Lufi, but we have, as of late, really wanted to focus on having the units provided on-site and negotiate for additional units where we can. And so I think one of the things the city council can do is when you get a market rate housing project before you that meets the affordability threshold of 15%, know that by approving that market rate project, you're also approving affordable housing projects. I think the other thing that the city council can do is when you have private commercial development, like the Bay Hill specific plan that will be coming before the council shortly, as a part of that, there is an affordable housing linkage fee that is a part of that build-out. And I think that when we were here a few months ago, the number is just over $20 million that would be provided to the city for our Affordable Housing Trust Fund as for the total build-out of what is proposed by YouTube. With that $20 million, you can actually help to subsidize the very low units. And one of the hardest, out of all those categories, the very low are the hardest to provide, and they require the most subsidy. And so oftentimes, there is municipal dollars that needs to go into those. And right now, we have an Affordable Housing Trust Fund that has $3 million in it, and so leveraging that by approving private development would provide the council with the resources to invest into those very low units. I think the other thing we can do is to look at city-owned property. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of property to offer, but if we can identify city-owned parcels, we can provide those to nonprofit developers. Unfortunately, again, with the cost of construction, sometimes there needs to be money that comes along locally to make those happen, too. And so we really need money in our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, not just land.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments of council?
I just, I'm going to, through the chair.
Laura, please.
I just want to kind of piggyback on council member Mason's comments earlier about, you know, what's the ramifications, and we don't need these. And I think as times are changing, and we don't really know what's going to happen in the next few years, this construction that we anticipated to happen is not going to happen. And so I think a lot of these numbers, even for the future, I'm worried about. You know, they may look good today, but they may not happen. So I just think it's that much more important that, you know, when projects come our way that sort of check all the boxes, and even if it's not an ideal situation that we would all want, we need to think about housing and requirements, because these are important. This is important to really support our community.
Michael.
Thank you. So, you know, as we start looking at the economic landscape going forward and just our ability to generate that many units in the timeframe, what other recourse would the city have if we're getting to the point where it's, obviously, we're not going to make it? Probably, a lot of cities are in the same position where they're not going to make those numbers. So is there any effort to work with the state to either change those expectations or rethink what they're putting out there and try to come up with a more reasonable or appropriate solution?
I wish we would have a chance to talk to the state to reconsider the numbers. As you mentioned, a lot of cities are in the same boat. A lot of cities have worked really hard to try to get those expectations up, and a lot of cities are suffering from the numbers of units. We are working on a number of projects that will be coming before the council for consideration. The city manager has alluded, I would just urge the city council to consider those projects as we bring them forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Pamela. I'm being informed that we do have somebody who has emailed in. This is a public hearing, and that's the reason I didn't ask for it to be closed, that we gave enough opportunity and time. So at this time, we're going to ask Pamela if you would step back a little bit for that safe space, and Joanne, if you would mind coming up to the podium and reading the comment or question from a member of the public.
Sorry. Bear with me. Dear Honorable San Bruno City Council, my name is Alex Melendez, and I make this comment only on my own behalf. I would like to highlight the necessity for more housing and affordable housing in San Bruno. We especially need housing for the very low and extremely low-income housing. Public land is a great resource for developing affordable housing. Inclusionary housing, affordable housing included in market rate housing is also a great option. Even market rate housing has its place in assuring local displacement does not take place by providing our workers a place to stay. I believe the current COVID-19 crisis highlights how much the jobs/housing imbalance plays how traffic is affected by lack of housing. The need for shelter at all income levels is the great moral issue of our time. I apologize for my late and quick comments. Sincerely, and wishing good health, Alex Melendez.
Thank you, John, very much. Okay, so with there being no other public comments or hearing at this time, I'd like to make a motion or have a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made in second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so now we're going to bring it back to the city council. Were there additional questions or comments, Pamela or other staff? If not, this would need a motion in a second, or if we want to authorize.
To the chair, just one final comment. So I think development, I mean, it's unfortunate tonight, we're in the situation we are, where we have really no public comment, except for one resident. But I think housing is such an important aspect of the city, and I know we've talked about this, but I just want to really state this publicly, that we need to, at some point, look at having an open town hall, some sort of discussion to really educate the public. Because housing isn't about a decision we make today for tomorrow, it's about a decision we make today for years in advance. I mean, if you think about Measure N and how long it took to start that process, it was well over 10 years to actually pass that. So, you know, we can't approve a project today that we haven't really thought about five and 10 years ago. And unfortunately, the numbers end in 2023, but the city is going to be given new set of numbers to meet, and those numbers are going to be, you think these are bad, they're going to be worse than we're seeing today. So we, as a city, really need to start thinking long-term. How do we get there in 10 years? How do we get to that number? And in that process, how do we educate our residents? How do we educate the residents to understand the process, to understand the requirements, and that they're clear and they don't feel it's last minute, we didn't tell them, we didn't share them, we're trying to approve a project without them knowing about it? That we really got to think about the communication plan that we have with the residents, getting them to understand the process with new development. And I think that there's an education, and I think a lot of people don't understand that process. And so I think it's really important that we look at what long-term plan is, and we look at educating the community, and the final thing would be a good communication plan. So residents go, I got a place, I got a location, I'm knowing we get notified, there's multiple ways we notify our customers, our residents, and I feel like everything's above board and nothing's happening without me knowing about it.
And also to add on, I would think also, just some of the projects, Pamela, that you had brought forward, it has sometimes, been sometime, that folks are reminded about truly all the projects that are going on in the community and what has already been, like 500 silvian, has been approved. We need to remind folks of things that are in place and that are hopefully moving forward. But I think also what council member Davis said, I think it is important going forward, too. It is a bigger part of our community, it really wants to be engaged and be informed. If they make the decision or choice not to want to come to one of the meetings or with a developer or that, then that's okay. But we want to afford them those opportunities and the availability in which to come forward and to express within this community. It's not just about my neighborhood or your neighborhood, really is about the city and its future. So I really think that it is important that we have a clear process, that we communicate with the developer, that the city takes some ownership, too, when it goes to reaching out to the residents in this community, so we're assured that the right list is being used, the right people are getting the information, and it gets across many levels of opportunity for folks to be knowledgeable, educated, feel empowered, and feel the ability in which to have their voices heard. So is there any other comments?
To the mayor? Mr. Mayor?
We'll go, Marty. Marty.
Yeah, so the council had a retreat, and we talked about setting priorities and having a meeting to have priorities, and a priority, I think, from my understanding of the council's, is to move forward with housing. But as my colleagues have just said, we need to make sure that we have a clear process with the communication. We can learn from our neighboring cities. Burlingame brought in Home for All, which had a bunch of community meetings that educated the public before the project was even brought forward. So that is something that we could look forward to, and I'm looking to have that priority-setting meeting so we can give clear direction of what we want to do for this coming year. And we have to be thinking longer range. And so I'll leave it at that, and I know this COVID-19 has derailed a lot of staff time, and rightly so, because it is extremely important. So I don't know if the city manager can give us an update when we're going to talk about priorities again, because everybody's so busy, but I think it's coming pretty soon. Is that correct?
Hold on. Can we stick on the topic of the report, and then we could certainly circle back around to that unless that's relevant to the decision on the transmittal? Is that okay?
I think it's important to acknowledge that we, as a council, are looking at setting these priorities, and we can take a short answer later, but moving forward with this, I support the transmittal.
Okay. Let me get Michael, who's been waiting. Michael?
Thank you. So I wanted to echo what council member Davis said. I have heard a lot of the same concerns, and I think it is important for us as a council to be educated on the process and the public to understand what the process looks like. So when projects do come forward, it's very clear what steps are going to be taken, what the timeframes are, and so that we don't have any surprises at the end of the process. But overall, I agree, there is a regional need for housing. Something else I just want to reiterate is that we do need to keep an eye on what's happening regionally, because the economy is definitely being impacted right now. I know San Francisco has made some decisions on what they're doing with their development, and they're tying new commercial activity to their low-income residential. And so they're going to limit their growth. And so if a major city like San Francisco, that's an immediate neighbor, makes changes, I feel that that could change the landscape and any future planning that we might be working on, it could be impacted. And I don't know that, I mean, the gap right now is huge, but we certainly don't want to go down a trajectory where we're going to start building houses, and then by the time they're all done, nobody's going to live in them. So I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of those bigger things that are happening regionally, statewide, and just make sure that, you know, what we're doing still makes sense as we reevaluate and things continue to change.
Are there any more questions or comment on the transmittal of the California Department of Housing and Community Development?
Yeah, I just have, I'm just, sorry, just also echoing, I've been pretty consistent on my message, even as a planning commissioner, that we need some improved communications. And I want to not just stick to the communications with residents, but also the communications around residents and how meaningful they are. So not just hosting a meeting to host a meeting, but to answer the questions that residents are really concerned about, which, you know, and some of the concerns that were raised that I had heard was, what are the impact of these developments on our water? What are the impacts of these developments on our sewer systems? What are the impacts of these developments on our school systems? I remember attending a school board meeting where it was very clear to me that the appointed administration was completely unaware of the RINA requirements, and we're not taking those into consideration when considering future impacts on our schools, on our public schools here in San Bruno. schools here in San Bruno. So I think it's really important that not only are the communications with the residents meaningful and that our facilitators are prepared, but that all of our partner agencies are aware of what's going on and that our requirements are requirements, we're going to have to meet them, and this is actually happening. And lastly, I wanted to say that there are other cities who've implemented communication plans that have a specific requirement that triggers that public comment period, which we currently don't have. I think in Burlingame, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe any development over 10 units triggers a public process. And so I'd love to see us actually create and approve a communications plan that includes that sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Ms. Linda? Okay, this just, this does need a motion and a second in order for the transmittal. Is there any action?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh voices. And then circling back around to Marty, just as far as the potential ETA or what we had discussed in February at the retreat. Sure. At the February retreat, with regard to priority setting, we were planning to have two subsequent meetings, one with regard to policies and procedures, the other with regard to policy setting. I believe the date that we were looking at for the priority setting was March 31st. I believe we did a poll, and not all council members could make that date, and so we will be looking for another date that that could occur. In addition, there was a number of information that was sent out via email for council members to initially sort of collect their individual ideas on what the priorities for the organization could be, and we had a process where we would ship those out to all of you guys and have you rate them. But I know COVID-19 has sort of thrown a wrench into everything, and hopefully, we will be approaching a new normal later on this week. And so I know we have a lot of staff that are sort of waiting to pick up projects that got put by the wayside, and so we'll make sure that we get to that for the rest of this week, and hopefully, we are at a new normal, and we won't sort of have our ELC planning for a pandemic, and we can go back to more regular work.
Thank you.